It's 5:30.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the work session for Belvista City Council, October 20, 2025. First item is review of amendments from September 22, 2025. Anyone have comments on those?
Another awesome job by our city clerk.
Okay, thank you for that. Second one is, she's got enough, she's got a backup going. Second one is unfinished business ordinance establishing a business license requirement for qualified businesses operating within the city, providing for placentes and exemptions, requiring annual renewal, establishing fees, providing penalties for violations and for other purposes, and this is on the third reading. I don't know if this discussion is general. I think Larry Wombs said some...
I've had a question.
Wendy?
Do we know when staff were presenting the resolution with the fee schedule attached? So we know what fee would be?
I can tell you what the plan is, and of course, whatever you adopt and what you do is up to you, but if this passes, third reading is adopted, then we anticipate the next meeting, there'll be a resolution to, for you all to establish what the fee is.
Do we know what staff might be thinking fee-wise?
It's not up to me. Of course, the staff, we operate for the mayor, so the mayor will tell us, you know, what he really wants to put in there.
Okay.
You have to ask the staff.
We're inclined to do anything particularly disorganized in...
There's an amendment in there that was submitted by me at the second reading, which proposes a $25 fee. I guess after additional consideration and sleeping out for another month, I don't, I don't see, I don't see the benefit to our businesses of adopting this ordinance. I'd be inclined to not support it. It doesn't do anything for them except cost more money and create more work. I see no real benefit coming back to them, and I've talked with a number of them, and that's their position as well. So it's just an additional layer of governance that I don't know that we need to apply to our, our businesses in Belvista.
So...
That's my first complaint.
Are you saying you're not interested in your amendments to it anymore?
I'm interested in doing the amendments and then determining, because I believe that there's a couple of items in the amendments that we need to enact for clarification. If we bring those up, you have them in there.
Wendy?
I had that opportunity to speak to Chief Sims earlier today, and he had a great example of why it's my idea that I need to have a business permit. Would it be okay if you came and spoke on that?
Sure, that'd be great.
Can I, can I say one thing? We moved our work sessions over here and for the recording and everything, but I do, I do want to remind everybody that there are amendments in the work session, and that debate really needs to be at the regular meeting, okay? So I mean, we can ask questions and do as you've done, but just, just keep in mind that, that regular debate needs to be at the regular meeting.
That is informational.
Okay, go ahead, Chief, come up.
Senator Becker?
That's kind of like what we said before, a prime example, the most recent example of having a business license. Most recent example of having a business license would be, Blue Cranes done a lot of work down in the south end of town, okay? And they're demoing several businesses there, just causing some of those businesses to have to relocate. One of those businesses relocated out here to the central part of town, and they relocated and done a lot of work inside their building without anybody even knowing, the planning in the, our department didn't know. They're in there doing remodeling, they're in there over there moving electrical, they're moving plumbing and things like that. If we had a business license or something in place, we would have known and moved from that location to the other location, would have kicked in a certificate of occupancy from the fire department inspection, that we could have started them down the right path of getting that process started with a, with their new business location. That's just one example. We've had that numerous times we go up to businesses like this, that we don't even know how to move from point A to point B, and we don't know if they're in the right spot, or what they're doing, or what they've done prior to moving in. Part of our job is to make sure that the businesses and the people that occupy and visit those businesses are safe.
Chief, can't the same be said for anybody moving into business? Even if you implement a business license, they don't have to apply for the license, and they can start doing remodel on the occupancy.
That's correct.
They're still required to get a certificate of occupancy, which, and...
And that could be after the fact, but we would like to know before they're moving in, make sure they're in the right spot, can be in the right spot before they start occupying the business.
And in my answer...
That's a big, that's a big part of it.
In my answer, though, that chief is a business person ought to acknowledge or be aware of the fact that there are zoning rules without having a license to hammer over their head, but it does nothing for them. It does something for us, but doesn't do anything for them. The reality is, they need to make themselves aware of what licensing or permits are needed if they move to a different location. They should be savvy enough in the business sense to know that before they even consider an alternate site, and so it's not a business license that will help them. It will obviously do what you're saying it will do, but a business owner needs to be savvy enough to understand those principles.
Well, that's what, I hope that's what we're trying to accomplish.
But the business license, the business license is not an answer for that.
Okay. If you recall, our attorney mentioned you're not supposed to have wide-ranging debate at a work session.
Yeah, that's what you want to drive.
Shay?
I was just gonna request at full consideration, if we're next week, is it possible to get a list of neighboring cities in Northern Arkansas, if they have a license or not, and then what the fee might be if they charge it? Put that together for us on staff, please.
Yeah, I think, Taylor, I think we could probably get that pretty quickly, couldn't we? Incidentally, thanks for the microphone.
Mayor?
Can we, can we make an amendment to the certificate of occupancy stating that you agree to notify the city in the event you relocate within city limits?
That's, that would be an entirely different type of ordinance or not in, that's not what it is. I mean, you could say you can do that at some point, perhaps, but it's outside the scope of this particular ordinance.
But that would fix the problem that they're saying we need for the business license, would it not, with the...
Well, that's only if people moved internally. What if you moved in from some other city, came from Springdale or whatever? So that would only partially fix the problem, I suppose. I did want to mention about the amendments, Amendment Section 4B says charitable or fundraising activities conducted solely for public benefit, and it used to say for public benefit by the city or schools. The trouble with deleting that is that charity can do the same thing that for-profit business was, namely move their business into an R1 district. So we still want them, we don't want to exempt charities from this altogether. So, and on the, this one particularly drives me crazy. The third amendment has to do with putting the license fee in the ordinance. You know, we have all these people in the administration who've been doing this for 10, 15 years, and they noticed it was a bad idea to put in the ordinance, that it's better to do it by resolution, because it's so hard to change ordinances and whatnot. And they also thought, oh, we have a new code, let's do everything particularly totally uniform. Used to be there was a fee over here, a fee over here, and hard for people to locate it. So people with 10, 15 years' experience notice what's wrong, have a new way of doing it, and then somebody on council says, oh, let's just stick the fee in the ordinance. You know, these people have been doing this for a while, and figured out a better way to do it, and then people on council will contradict them and say, oh, let's do it the old disorganized way like we used to. Makes no sense. So I didn't think the third suggestion was, was well considered. So that's aside, this is about the amendment, it's not about whether we do it or not.
I have one other question related to the...
Okay, sure.
And I'm not trying to debate, I'm honestly trying to figure out if we can address this another way. If a, if a, say a business from Springdale were to relocate to Belvista, couldn't they opt out of applying for the business license and start all the work, and then apply for a certificate of occupancy, and then that's when we go, oh, you're not allowed to have this type of business in this location? So you withhold the certificate of occupancy, so the same thing could continue to happen? Is that correct?
They're not always going to get a certificate of occupancy. If it's not a new development, they're not going to get a certificate of occupancy.
It was a use versus the zoning that was an issue, I think. Is that correct, Chief?
Can you build a certificate of occupancy?
I know, but if one restaurant moves out, another restaurant moves in, you're saying that the city's gonna issue them a new certificate of occupancy?
They'll have a different one over that name. Change of ownership.
A change of ownership to the certificate?
Yes.
And that's pursuant to the fire code? Not our development cap. I was confused.
Anyway, is there any more discussion? Or feel free to, be sure to bring up your debate in the comments next week, so it gets on the record. Thanks for your thoughts. Next one is resolution establishing respective cost sharing of health benefits between the city of Belvista and certain police department and fire department retirees and their dependents. This was from Travis Hare and was tabled until October, and this is October. Do you want to say something?
I kind of like the resolution with the 85 rule or 80 rule, whatever, the one that you presented, I think that that's a cleaner, more sustainable version of that, so I'm happy with that one.
Okay, yeah, that is a item, a different item, but these are all kind of on the same subject.
So if we table that death on like, is it what you're proposing?
I mean, I just wouldn't entertain a motion on it, so...
Yeah. Larry Wombs?
I, I like the resolution proposed by Mayor Flynn as well. However, the article that it refers to in that resolution is ACA 141-110, and that's a very complicated part of state law that I think we need to sort through and figure out, actually, who and how it's applicable to our people. There's a lot of discussion in there about ages and departments and so on.
Well, I mean, state law is state law, what you need to sort, we need to take it...
I understand that, but we need to understand what, what inclusion is in there and how it affects our people, and maybe, and maybe our HR director looked at that when she created this table of comparison here.
I have to let her do this then.
But it's a, it's a very complicated section to read through.
Okay. We wait now, next meeting, we'll be sure to take a look at that. Anything else on that one? Okay, the next one is ordinance, this new business, well, I should have added something at the beginning of the new business. This is not on the agenda, but in speaking with the fire chief and Roger Geyer today, we, you know, we have plans in the budget to add another building inspector next year, and I thought as we should probably go ahead and do that right away. As some of you may have heard from builders, it's, it's started to be a struggle to get inspections this timely as it's like, and it's pretty significant, so we'd like to address that by adding the building inspector right away. That same department was gonna add a person for permits slash plan reviewer, to do permits and help out the plan reviewer, and that was gonna start next year. This actually isn't a new position, they have a position in their department open, but we'd also like to go ahead and start working on hiring that person, and if you'd like, Roger Geyer is here, could speak on these if you'd like to hear from him.
Yes.
Okay, Roger, you want to come up and say a few words about it? Shay, go ahead.
So sorry, I followed you, but well, this, is this going to be on next week's agenda? Or, I just was curious, I appreciate you knowing, but are we voting on this, or...
Yeah, it would be on next week's agenda, and the very first one about the building inspector would affect the budget a little bit, because it's what, a month or two months, depending on how fast we're able to hire them.
Thank you for the question.
Roger?
Yes. Okay, as far as the building inspector is concerned, we are doing more comprehensive inspections now. We're trying to comply with the codes, which has been lightly addressed in the past, but there's many things that we've been missing, and we're concerned about those things. So we have been having regular meetings to get consistent in the way we apply the code, because that was one of the complaints to the builders, if we're not consistent. We're having training, each person, I think everybody in my group has signed up for a course that they're taking online right now, so that they can stay impressed of what's going on and be certified in the areas that they're inspecting. Whenever we have an inspector off for any reason, we find ourselves very short-handed and fall behind, and if we have training sessions, we're really, right, right now we're 10 days behind in inspections. So we're trying to catch up, and we find ourselves always trying to catch up and always trying to get through these inspections too quickly, not having the communication that we need with the builders, so they can understand what we're looking for, and we understand what their troubles, trials, and challenges are. So another inspector, in my mind, is absolutely essential to have a reasonable inspection team in Belvista. We have a lot of challenges here with our topography, foundation problems, framing problems, framing crews have moved from one position to another and don't all realize what's needed, but we can spend more time with them if we have enough staff. And then as far as the, is there any questions about the inspector, Chief Robinson? Okay, so as we look at a permit tech plant examiner, you can have a plant examiner capable of doing over-the-counter plants many times, and we can take those, those small projects out of the, out of the...
Q.
bottleneck, it's a, yeah, it's a Q, it's a bottleneck, with the small inspections that are small plant reviews, that we don't have to actually spend that much time on. We can, instead of, instead of having them break in somewhere down the line, they can be addressed more equitiously, and that's, that permit tech will also relieve our other staff when we're short-handed, if someone takes a vacation, someone's sick. We just had one permit tech that was out for three months and trying to work from home, and it, it doesn't work, so we have to be able to be versatile, and that other position, as, as the mayor said, is already a position that exists, and we're just moving it up. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I support hiring this additional person, I know we talked, you know, in detail about that, but I would like to encourage staff to just explore the option of hiring a PRN or a part-time person in addition to this, and that way you could put them to work without all the overhead, like, benefits when you need them, and then, you know, don't call them to work when you don't need them. I think, I think that would be just a good thing to look into, at least.
There would be, and have any, have a roving inspector that could help ensure consistency too, and help training. Those are the things, we can train in the field much better than we can train in the room, so all of these, I think, is our enhancements, and I appreciate your time.
Okay. Larry?
Other than that, inspection, training courses offered by the state for inspectors doing all sorts of things, whether it's a building inspection, or whether it's a plumbing inspection, or an HVAC, or an electrical, and are people certified to do only one of those inspections, or are they certified in more than one position, and are they current in their certifications? There's a lot of questions there.
That's all right, I can follow the line, John. The inspectors are mostly, I believe all of them are certified in building. They're not all certified in electric, they're not all certified in mechanical. The state is having problems giving classes in those areas, in the mechanical, and I think the electric too. I'm, I'm encouraging the inspectors to be studying in ICC, which is the universal code for where I, where I came from, and ICC is available online anytime, where the state's only available when they're available, where they're available. Unfortunately, I took two inspectors away for an entire week, and they came back. I could have had them taking classes online and still doing their work in the meantime, so I embrace that, to move to the ICC for training and certification.
Larry?
Are the building inspectors doing other inspections beyond buildings? In other words, heating, ventilating, building framing?
Yes.
Puddings?
Yes.
They are doing other inspections?
Yes.
As an example?
Basic review of ducting in an attic, the...
That's part of the HVAC system?
That is part of the HVAC.
So I'm, I'm really alluding to, are you doing inspections for the fire division for fire protection?
Am I doing inspections for fire?
Are, are inspectors under you doing inspections of fire protection or prevention systems? Is that a part of your work?
We have a fire inspector that does, it's not under me, it's under Chief Sims, that does fire inspections specifically.
So you are doing none of those?
Well, when you talk about fires, like Springer Systems and things like that, that's correct, the fire inspector is doing the fire inspections.
So you're doing none of the fire inspection, fire prevention stuff?
No. We would do, we would do a rated assembly, which is building, which is fire protection, to isolate fire from moving on, but that's a building inspection.
Craig?
I just have a quick question. With this just kind of, just getting thrown on the agenda, are we considering budget for these hirings at this point, or is this, or is this in the next year? I don't, I'm just trying to get a feel for what we're...
We're talking about, we're talking about two months, a budget for two months of this year, looking for an immediate hire. However, I don't expect to get an immediate hire. I expect it's gonna take at least a month to find anybody qualified and acceptable to, to our team.
And where that money's going to come from, is the fire side?
Chief Sims, he'll pay for it.
Go to the... I just want to...
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll all get, he's in the basket.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for that, Roger. Yeah, the new building inspector was gonna be in next year's budget, obviously, for a whole year, and...
Well, I just, though, we're trying to make adjustments for this, this side.
Yeah. Okay, next one is ordinance D, waiving the requirements of formal commitment bidding authorizing a contract with Superior Automotive Group in a total amount not to exceed $128,314 for the purchase of two 2025 Ford F-250 trucks for use by the police department. Tim Cook, could you come up and say a few words about this?
These were two vehicles that we had in our budget for this year. We did try to procure these vehicles off the state bid, it was awarded to Smart Ford in Auburn. We put in a request in January, and September, we were notified by them, and our truthful answer that Ford had eliminated Auburn, we built out for the year, and we'd have to reapply in January for next year's state bid. So we contacted Superior, who we do most of our business with, and asked to get vehicles for that, the two vehicles together, over the price of what the state bid was, is an additional $7,000. But then, if we don't move forward with this, then we're back into the whole loop of trying to use the state bid again, which is already paid once. What these two vehicles will be for, one is a F-250 diesel, which is gonna go to our sergeant in our operations division. That sergeant's position was created when we brought code enforcement over, which has been over two years. During that time, he's been driving whatever basically we can find for him. What sergeant does in code enforcement, he's on code, training, jail, vehicle builds and repairs, and supervises everybody underneath the lieutenant division. What we're gonna use this vehicle for, and specifically why we're requesting the F-250 diesel, is to supplement our Leso trips. So in the last year, I spoke to y'all about the vehicle that we got that we're doing with these trips, and I mentioned past presidential administration, they eliminated all onsite wrecks at our Leso facilities. So now, when we have to do it, we have to put in a 14-week period, and if we, for something that we're really going after, and then we look and see if there's anything else during that timeframe that we can get while we're there. The better facilities are a little bit further away, so what we're trying to do is maximize the most money that we can do, and essentially, if I can move two vehicles out to bring more equipment back, it's more effective. We have used multiple other vehicles to try to do this in our fleet. We had a Chevy half-ton gas that we learned transmission out of. We got a three-quarter ton Ram that we started having transmission problems with it, so we moved it out for the diesel, that's currently driving that vehicle. We also secured a Ford one-ton gas off Leso, which we've used for a while, but we had to get rid of, and then we also currently still have a Chevy one-ton gas that we use but broke down to cans, and so we try to keep it here locally. Also, what we'll be using the vehicle for here is that we have, and if y'all ever wanted to see what we're doing out of operations, I'd be glad to be on a tour out there. We're trying to mobilize everything into trailers and the Conex boxes, where it's easily for us to move the trailer and everything that we do by what we have in that, this training equipment. training equipment. We're also standing up a search and rescue team. We also have to move heavy items. Our ammo, we bring in bulk, usually weights three to four ton in years, supplying, shelving the scrap metal off of stuff that we have to destroy that we bring in. And then also any other kind of, and we have to deal with a lot of weird stuff. So from disabled vehicles to in-town vehicles, to, I've had to bring RVs back from Branson, Missouri. So to have to get rid of things that people in sad situations, we just end up with and it's put upon us as a burden to people to do that. The other one is a Ford F-250 gas, and what we want to do is just give it some more capability. Like I said, we're putting all this stuff in trailer and Conex boxes. This truck will be used by code, and that'll be its primary function. But we need to, we're going to have another truck here to move one of those trailers locally. So that is why I'm requesting these various suspension vehicles.
Larry?
With your expressed experience of using half ton, three quarter ton other vehicles in the past, what's the rating on these and how are you assured that they will not have the same problems that you described before?
We've had the F-350 diesel in service for a year now. We are pulling a 40 foot flatbed that goes over Moose Neck. We've taken it approximately 25,000 miles and it's held well. We don't plan to use the F-250 for that. We're planning to use a 24 foot trailer, and we're not going to near have a low capacity that we're going to move with it. So we feel very confident with this vehicle. The main thing is, is that we see is that the gas motors just don't hold up when we're driving hundreds of miles and pulling a heavy or light vehicle.
Have you consulted with the street department chief mechanics?
Yes, we have. And they were very happy with the decisions that we made moving forward with the diesels to use them.
Travis?
Are any of the other vehicles going to be surplused?
The other ones that we have, no, not at the point. The, we got rid of the Ford one ton gas that I talked about a while back, so it was, the other Chevy that we got off Leso, we're currently using. As a matter of fact, I don't know if y'all have seen it, we've been hauling mulch in locally with it to repair the grounds out here. But at this time, we have no plan on getting rid of it. And one of the reasons is, is that that position hadn't had a vehicle actually assigned to them until now. So we spent two years just using whatever we can find to give them.
I hear that correctly, you're the number two guy in the department, and you got the truck with the sketchy transmission.
That's correct. But I'm fine with that. I would rather the people that really need to be that emergency person to call have a better vehicle.
Hannah?
Okay. Explain this to me again. So you said in January, you go through the process where you were trying to bid for two vehicles and you didn't get those. So is this essentially the two vehicles that were already approved in the budget?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that thorough explanation. Appreciate it. Okay, the next one is an ordinance, a manated development zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2025-59940, county parcel number 16-43269-000 from RE Residential Estate District to C2 Local Commercial. Taylor, give us a few words on that.
We have a rezonement request that failed the planning commission public hearing. It was six to one, six voted not in favor, one voted in favor, so it did not pass. The applicant has 30 days to time that vote to appeal that decision if they want the city council to continue to review the request without the planning commission's recommendation. That's what's happening tonight. They met that 30 day deadline, and they're here to ask you guys to still continue considering rezoning this property from RE Residential Estate to C2 Local Commercial. To add a little spice to this, we are in the middle, of course, as you know, of a new zoning code adoption. You guys have adopted it. We're in that 60 day waiting period before the new zoning map is effective. However, the new code, which is C2, is called Local Commercial, so that's what we're calling it tonight. We're referencing the new code that's going into effect on December 1st. This current parcel in the new map is ZOM is RE Residential Estate still. So the rezonement request is still applicable, just the name of the C2 zones changed from light to local commercial. So within the packet that you guys have, we were one step ahead, we went ahead and asked the planning commission to consider both C2s, light and local commercial, in the event that this happened, that we would be stuck in between two zoning codes and we would be considering two C2s. So you have all of the uses available to you within the packet for the new code that goes from effect 12. And considering both, staff has still did not recommend approval of this due to the intensity of the uses allowed in C2. This lot is sandwiched between two existing residential homes and a residential estate area. It is across the street from the C2 light commercial shopping district that my department used to be in community development. Bell's Table is over there, Barbell is over there, Bell's a barbell or gym is called. So that's the shopping center that is currently C2 across the street. There's also development or suitability for development concerns that staff had when considering the C2 use here. It currently does not have access to any utilities, doesn't have access to Centerton water, it's not within their service area, it's not within the POA, it doesn't have access to POA water, and it doesn't have access to sewer. So whatever's developed here, most likely, very large percentage chance, will have to be reliant upon its own onsite wastewater system and a well. Given that it's just 1.64 acres, sometimes I can get trucky, especially when considering the topography of a lot. There is a safer being towards the rear, pushing everything to the front. And of course, topography, there are constraints when putting an onsite wastewater system. And then the applicant has a representative here tonight. The applicant will be here at the regular meeting, but for tonight, he has a representative here should you have specific questions for the applicant or the one who's appealing with the commission's decision. How can you take your questions?
Wendy?
Do we know why they're asking for C2s to have C1?
We're not supposed to consider the one use that they had. Best practice, but I would definitely refer the applicant to answer that. Okay, thank you.
Travis?
Can you tell me the numbers on the vote from the planning commission?
Yeah, six to one.
And there's only seven people on the commission?
Yeah, we have seven. So six voted no, one voted yes.
There's nobody asking?
No. And then we had, I forgot to mention this, this was in my memo, we did have three people attend the public hearing, and that's in the minutes that was provided as well. All three of those neighbors spoken opposition.
Larry?
With the new zoning code, does it show this area of the subject lot to be continued residential or future commercial?
The new map still shows it as residential estate.
On the south side of the street?
Correct. This specific parcel, that's all we're looking at, yeah, this specific parcel is shown as RE in the new map that comes into effect December 1st.
And if you look at it carefully with the data you submitted in the packet, it shows a gradient from the street area or the edge of the street to the back of the lot to have the differential up to 64 feet vertically.
So legally speaking, we're supposed to consider zoning goes to the center line of the street. So technically, the zoning of the RE goes to the center line of Lake Ashar, technically speaking.
Shane Newport?
I don't understand what you just said.
It's just, it's a plain practice, so when you're looking at roadway, you can't really build on roadway. However, you were supposed to assume that the land use of the property adjacent to it extends to the center line of the road. So sometimes it gets tricky on maps. You'll see if someone's doing it very technically specific, the zoning will carry through the road to the center line. Some cities, we can blank, the roadway blank, but then planners are still supposed to assume that the land use goes to the center line of the road. Did that answer your question? That may have made it worse.
I feel like what you're saying is that perhaps the gradient differential might be more than 64 feet when considering to the center line of the road?
Yes.
Yeah, so the yellow will go to the center line of the road if we drew it specific to the applicant.
Thank you.
Larry?
The property itself, if we act on this, which we will be required to do, do we make the motion in the positive or in the negative? Do we make the motion as the planning commission did?
No, you've got a proposed ordinance in your packet. There are reasons that you treat it like any other ordinance. If, obviously, if you adopt it, you're going to get an appeal, but it's really up to you.
So we can make the motion in the affirmative and then vote no, or make it in the negative?
It's like any other ordinance, Larry.
Yeah, the ordinance is already in print, right? Your proposed ordinance.
The appeal has happened to get a hearing in front of you, so now you're just considering ordinance itself.
Shane?
So they can all stop during meetings?
Yes.
And the applicant is here.
So if the applicant's here, should we have them say a few words if they'd like?
He didn't come here.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Ryan Wehr. I'm actually, so I'm not the owner of this, I was just the representative. He asked to come. He does plan to be here for the next meeting, to my knowledge. So he said it was not approved because of topography, what was going to be, they didn't know what was going to be there, what the plan was, and then the residential zoning around it. To my knowledge, and I'm not as familiar with the details as the owner obviously is, but his, what he had told me was there's similar things nearby down the road that has been rezoned commercial that is also surrounded by residential. He also said with development, you know, him, his development funds that have been set aside, he can deal with the topography of the lot. And then in terms of usage, I think he was planning on putting some type of coffee shop here, which he had said
We can stop you because we can't ask you exactly what it is he wants to put there.
Oh, okay.
And so, and that wasn't the basis of any denial, I can tell by the planning commission, because they didn't, I was here, they didn't ask that that had come up. I mean, information can be volunteered, but the council has to look at the full potential rate uses in the zone, so don't feel compelled to provide the information.
Got you, okay.
You can say what you need to say, but
Got you.
Don't feel compelled to say.
Okay, but yes, so that was the main, those are the details that I was provided. And again, he's supposed to be here for the next meeting, so.
Shane Newport?
Can I understand your relationship to the property or to that?
Yes, I'm a real estate agent here locally, and I have worked with this client. He has multiple properties in Bella Vista, and I've worked with him for probably five or six years now, so that's why he asked if I could come in for him.
Travis, you answered all of the questions that I was going to ask you except for one. Is the property owner aware of the utilities or the lack of?
Yes, I believe he is.
So he has a plan to overcome the grade of it and all that? Does he have a plan for that?
To my knowledge, he does. He didn't share the specifics in terms of like a septic and well with me, but I know that's something he's already been considering, you know, throughout the process of trying to rezonate this.
Shane?
I'm asked that the owner of the property provide parcel number examples of the ones that he's calling out that are zoned for commercial but surrounded by residential, please.
Yes, okay.
Okay, thank you for providing the information. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is to have resolution establishing a health insurance premium credit for eligible police and fire department attorneys and their dependents based upon Rule of 85 eligibility standard. I don't know if there's any more discussion on this. We had covered a little bit, but we were covering the other one.
Here. Can I just say one thing?
Sure. Glenda Gelderman, our human resources director.
The one thing I just want to make note of is we can't change anything that the state has already mandated. So this doesn't change anything about who would be eligible to continue the health insurance after they retire under law fee as an eligible resident. This would only be voting to give some amount of money, I'm sorry, I'll propose right here, but towards their premium every month. That is really all you're voting on, is if they meet this Rule of 85 and they are eligible under law fee retirement, we would be contributing something towards their premium every month. Just wanted to clarify that, because this question did come up before. Like, are we complying? Have we looked at whether or not we're complying with the law? And yes, we are.
Okay. Larry?
So your assumption would be that it would cover the employee and spouse, if there are no dependents included in there?
We have to allow them to continue health insurance for the employee and any covered dependents. That includes spouse, any legal dependent children. And that's under the law. That has nothing to do with our contribution that's being proposed here.
So our contribution here is going to be, what, a flat amount?
A flat amount, yeah.
So is that a flat amount per the individual? So if there's a husband and wife or a wife and husband, it would be two of those or what?
My understanding, the way it's written, it would just be one flat amount regardless of who was covered.
Whether it was one, a single person, a couple, or a couple with a dependent.
Correct. Okay. The next one is under discussion items, tabling indefinitely, council member Hart.
Yeah, so I just wanted to have a discussion on tabling indefinitely, and the council's right to do so. I would never want to try to take that away. The only thing that I would ask for moving forward is that if you desire to table something indefinitely, you at least hear the person out with their proposal prior to tabling indefinitely. If you'll do that for me, I'll do that for you. And I think it's good practice, because you may hear something that changes your mind, but if you table before the discussion happens, that person doesn't get a chance to settle on it, so that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. The next one was 2026 budget draft in process, this is the first draft, and finance director Hall draft was sent to council under separate cover.
Do you want me to, are you guys ready for me to share my desktop so you can see the presentation? You have it in front of you. So I don't, I think they're so located, we're not involved in the 2025 budget, so I thought we might want to walk through this pretty carefully, and please feel free to ask me any questions that you have while we're doing it. But what we are doing here, this is a summary, and this budget and revenues, we're estimating $25.2 million, which is an increase of almost $2 million over the prior year. It's a little ambitious, and we'll discuss it in detail later, but you'll see how we got to that number. This transfers to street department, we always have to, if there's going to be a deficit into the street department, we have to fund that. So that's what that is. That's a requirement. And then the 24 is, the 24.1 is the operating expenditures request. Down towards the bottom, you look and you'll see the street revenues. There's an increase of 5%. That is based on county. So most of street fund revenues are based on state turnback fees, but the state turnback is expected to be flat this year. So there's no increase there. That 5% is due to county, you'll see that. That five percent is due to county, you'll see that in a few minutes. And there's our transfer, and then you can see that the street operating expenditures increases by three percent. So as you look through this, you're going to see that the largest source of revenue is sales tax, and we're estimating, and that's about, that's about fifty percent. So, you know, our city, you know, I've said this before, our city is only as good as our sales tax, right? And, and we have to, you know, that's, that's the way we are surviving, is on our sales tax. So any increase there is, is a good one, and we, I've said this before, we can't survive on property tax alone, and you can see, because that's only sixteen percent of total revenues, and that's at four point six million dollars. I've already mentioned state and county turnbacks, this is about twelve point eight percent. Just note that the state turnback is expected to be flat, and county, I've increased it by five percent. Franchise fees, that's the next biggest one, and so franchise fees are kind of interesting because the thing that's saving us a franchise fee is that the electricity and the sewer still, excuse me, still are increasing, but our telephone and cable are decreasing. So that's, that's what happens there, and it's been happening for, gosh, I think that started in maybe twenty-twenty. I should have mentioned this before, and I meant to, but just know that this budget assumes that the bond is passed in November. And part of what's happening here is, you'll see on this page here, let me go back to this page here, I took out, we had a, a bond, I'm sorry, it's the wrong page, I went the wrong way, sorry. You'll see that the bond, the bond has been removed from the expenditures, it's actually well-aided, but anyway, that's what I'm saying here, because it's expected to be paid off. And then I just want to draw attention to the fact that the building inspection fee is a seventeen percent increase over the twenty-twenty-four actuals. So let's look a little more closely at these specific items. You can see the ambulance revenue, that's a ten percent increase, and we've already talked about the sales tax. As you know, that for the current year, sales tax has been pretty good for the city, not as great for the county, and this is really hard because we, we don't have twenty-five to look at right now, and as everybody there knows, that what's going to happen, depending on who you believe, what's going to happen is, you know, there, there's been several articles that we may already be in a recession, and, you know, however, it does appear that Northwest Arkansas may be a little immune to what's going on, especially Belavista, because our taxes are still going up, and they went up for August and September as well. So it's possible that we could be a little immune to some of that drama, if you will. It's hard to know. This is, this is a really hard number to put pen down. Then the building inspection fees, you see there, that's a, over the budget for last year, that's a pretty big increase. But the reason I mention that the actual number in the prior flight is that it's a seventeen percent increase over the, the actuals for twenty-four, but over the budget for twenty-four is a fifty-six percent increase. Property tax revenue, we're estimating five point five, a little more than five percent increase here, and that's because of new homes, but as you know, we only get, you know, on average, we get two to three hundred dollars per new home, so that's not a big, a big amount of money. So are there any questions in how we came up with these, you know, we, this again is a preliminary, and it'll be adjusted if something comes to light between now and the time the budget is, is going to be passed, and we will make adjustments, of course. But does anybody have any questions about that at the moment?
I think Travis does.
Yeah, so I'm due to the budget thing, so bear with me if this comes later or whatever, but what is the percentage of raise for the employees?
That's on each different tab, we'll get there in a minute.
Okay, thanks.
Anna?
Hi, Kim, this is Anna.
Hi.
I have a question around, okay, this is assuming that the bond passes, so where, in what number, if the bond didn't pass, would be the impacted number?
Well, the whole budget would have to change dramatically. The whole process would change dramatically. So for instance, that franchise fee, that we were talking about, I'll show you in a second, but the, the expense of the franchise fee loan that we're trying to pay off with the bond would come out of our.
Operating.
So this, yes, so this number would not be, the very immediate, the very immediate result would be this number, our net operating revenue, would be a negative one million dollars, it'd be over one million dollars negative.
Meaning the revenue bonds, a payment of six hundred eighty-three thousand a year.
Yes, right.
If that's not paid off, then your revenue versus expenses must be six hundred eighty-three thousand dollars worse than what we're showing.
Correct. Yes. That's, that's the immediate. Now, there's other, other implications of that in our capital expenditures numbers too, and that's where it gets really complicated, because as the mayor has mentioned, for capital expenditures, we basically have to stop everything, right? And we would have to really, really sit down and look hard at what we could possibly stop and what we wanted to do and/or draw down our reserves dramatically. So, I mean, it's a pretty, that will be a very complicated discussion if it doesn't So, it'll be, it'll be a hard, a hard conversation, that's for sure. But any questions about revenue, because we're about to go into expenses?
I think we're all set.
Okay. All right, and this is just about street, you're just showing you, you know, where I, the county turnbacks, you know, that I've increased. All right, so, you know, we're expecting that, that franchise fee bond to be paid, paid off and with the bond. The, wanted to make sure everybody knew that this plan will be updated, because we have, I believe in November, we have open enrollment. We have open enrollment, and people will be choosing their medical insurance, and so we will update it right after that. Okay, so this is how the, at a summary level, these are the increases that each department is requesting.
Is that page eight?
Yes, page eight. I'm sorry. I thought it was, but you're probably looking down making notes. And now I'll go ahead and talk to you about the individuals, individual line items. So this is department-wide, well, each year, they ask me to exclude benefits and salary, all right? So this expenditure is what the request is excluding benefits and salaries. That's what eight point one is for. Okay, so Travis, you'll see in the, in the top line, the payroll expenses, this is what each department is requesting for payroll expenses at this time, right? And the same, as, you know, benefits are a big part of what we do, so it shows benefit, and then you're looking at your operation expenses. So as you look through these next pages, and knowing, knowing, of course, that this, knowing, of course, that these numbers are preliminary, preliminary only, right? And that we are reviewing these numbers as we go. So you can, you know, you can look through each one of these. And you can see, like, on the planning, this is two new employees for planning, that's part of why it's a nineteen percent increase, but as goes the, as goes payroll expenses, so goes the benefit expenses. It will go up at least as much, if not more than, salaries.
Mayor?
Yes, Travis?
So could you tell me, and sorry if you're already interested, the current employees, the percentage of a raise that they'll receive? Does she understand?
I know, but she did. I will tell you that we analyzed the national figures, and they're around three point five, three point six percent, and I had some conversations with local people, mayors, county judges, people like that, and felt they're close, I see a little more of about four percent. What we did is we have a three percent cost of living, we had inflation at about two point seven, and then the last couple of reports before the government shutdowns cracked up a little more, like two point nine. So we were characterizing three percent as cost of living, and then some of the people got another percent above that, a, I forget the phrase they use for that.
Performance rates?
Yeah, performance, yeah. And, and there's always people that get promoted or job changes and things like that, which causes different, different situations. Generally speaking, that an increase of four percent on our payroll is not kind of benefits, just the pay is around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Now, that excludes fire, please. I mean, the four percent is everybody else.
Shay?
I'm assuming that, like, a lot of employers, our raises handled on an individual basis, or is it a blanket applied to all city staff equally?
It is not applied to all city staff equally.
So there might not be a blanket answer that would include all two hundred plus, just a.
Yeah.
Right. Like, you can look here at, at police on page fifteen, and there's only one additional officer and one half-time person, yet their payroll increased eight percent. So they got, they got significantly more than the three percent and four percent, the three percent and the one percent.
Why do?
With the HR payroll increase, did we, did we go to hire somebody else, but that's significantly increased, six thousand dollars? Did we hire somebody or did we get someone to promote, like, what? Is there an extra head added?
Uh, Glenda, we.
I'll answer that, that's me. So built into that number is a promotion for one person?
Correct.
And retiree payout of vacation and sick?
That makes total sense, thank you so much.
Travis? Yeah, and there, well, some of the little tiny departments are working on such a little base, if one little thing makes a big effect. Travis?
So she said that that doesn't apply to the police and fire, the city employees are getting a three percent color raise, and there's performance-based, promotion-based raises as well, but what is the police and fire fee for the color raise?
They're giving three percent for cola.
Okay.
And then they have other adjustments.
Okay. And our city budget is anticipated to go at five percent, is that correct?
No.
No, okay.
Do you want me to go back there? I think it's nine percent is the total.
Okay.
I'm sorry, let me, let me, yeah, nine, basically, the expenses are increasing by nine percent. Revenues increased by eight percent, expenses are increased by nine percent.
That, that's all expenses, right, Kim?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So is the three percent the absolute best we can do for the employees?
Well, I can tell you what's happened since I've been mayor. Police and fire have gotten bigger raises than everybody else, and a lot of that has to do with competition from other cities, and the, the chiefs have been very good in communicating what's going on and keeping track of what's going on, and there's been a lot of competitive pressure, but we actually analyzed, in particular jobs, we've seen where certain level jobs get way out of whack, I'm talking like ten, fourteen thousand dollars, less than maybe Matt Millen Rogers, and we feel like we, you know, we need to make an adjustment with, you know, sergeant versus sergeant, or whatever it happens to be, like, why are we really out of whack here? Sometimes you're okay, and some jobs are way out of whack on the others. So, there's been a lot of competition the last few years, I think, especially on the police side, that's partially at nationals, right? Where the news media constantly tells you, there's a terrible job, and everybody hates police. So even in nice places like Belavista, it does have some effect, probably has a bigger effect in Chicago, but it has some effect even in nice communities like Northwest Arkansas has. And the other thing I personally think was a factor, you know, the federal government gave this tariff money a few years ago, and Belavista got like five point nine million dollars, well, so many places like Springdale were getting sixty, seventy million dollars, and they already had motivation to increase pay, and they had all this extra money, so I felt that tended to push it even more. So it's been a challenging competitive situation, basically.
Sure. And I'm not speaking just of police and fire, I feel like if we could figure out how to give the entire city an actual color raise for the Northwest Arkansas cost of living, they would really appreciate it, and I think they're important, they're our most important asset to the cities, our personnel, so if we could do any better, I think, I don't know if I have support from the council or not.
Well, I agree that it's, it's always a challenge, and, you know, it's interesting, when I was in the private sector, I noticed the challenge between stockholders and employees, their interests aren't the same. And in the public sector, I noticed that between residents and employees, and our residents are really supportive of our employees, particularly the police and fire, first responders, I love the way they're supportive of their first responders. But, you know, we have a budget where we're at negative three hundred forty-seven thousand, and each one percent increase is, what, over a hundred thousand dollars? So it makes it a big challenge to do, do too much, we try to be as competitive as we can. One thing, historically, cities have tended to be maybe a little lower in the private sector on wages, but better on benefits, and we are better on benefits, we're clearly better on benefits than even the big rich companies. So, you know, there are some trade-offs there, I guess.
Yeah, it seems to me that we, if the bond issue were passed, that my house would go in with that cost of living raise, but.
Well, we'll still be at negative three hundred forty-seven. My, my.
Well, it's going to be.
Close that gap, you know?
Just know that this is a preliminary number, and it's very likely. and very likely will be significantly more than $340,000 when all's said and done. Because we do have, the benefit expense is going to go up again when everybody makes their selections, right? And when we get those new numbers in, then we'll have to review that. So I expect it will be another $50,000 or $60,000 minimum, minimum on benefit expense.
I told Kim I wanted to get it off to negative $340,000. And she said, I think you're probably headed the other direction after the benefits come in.
Yeah. So, and so the fire, you're gonna see on page 16, you're gonna see that they are giving three new staff starting mid-year. And you guys were start, we're talking about the new inspector.
Oh, speaking of that, we did get rejected. And we put in for a grant for six firefighters. And they were kind enough to tell us before the end of the year that we didn't get it. So we could plan better. It's very competitive. I mean, everybody wants those, it's such a good deal. So it's always tough to get. But the chief thought we might have a little better shot because we were only asking for six instead of a big number, but it didn't happen, so.
And the library, you can see down at page 17, the bottom, they're taking a half percent to full time. Okay, and so here's where we were talking about the, we were just talking about the fire station number one remodel bond. And that, you know, that's the bare minimum, $600,000. Basically, $71,000 will hit our budget. And here is the street, the street budget. And then that's how we transfer to the other, the others. Are there any questions about any of this? Keeping in mind, of course, that you'll see, you'll see another versions, right? You'll see, you'll see another version in November and then you'll see a final version for our work session. And then you'll see another version of, well, it may or may not be a different version than last time, right? So when we do the work session, the first week of December, which, do we have a date for that yet, John?
No, we need to get with council and figure out what would be a date to work for them. Usually in very early December, we have one last big work session on this and then pass it.
And that's where we, yeah, that's where we will give you the final numbers of what we were trying to do here. And by the way, the bond, we will know if the bond passed at that point as well.
Wendy.
Kind of went with that question. Do we, are we currently working on a budget where the bond does not pass? So we can have numbers ready to go. I would listen beforehand, that might also be as advocates, that we'd be advocates for the bond. That might be helpful too, as a tool for us to use personally.
Yeah, so, well, we thought about doing two different versions and then we decided to just go with this one and, you know, work on it. But yeah, I can admit, there's a few obvious things we could probably tell you about, like the $683,000 more expenses that you'd have because you have the revenue.
Yeah, this budget right here would not be that difficult to, you know, to update. This isn't the one. Do we want to go ahead and talk about, do we want to go ahead and talk about the capital budget? Or do you feel like it's too preliminary, John?
Yeah, that's where most of the changes would be in the gap axes.
Right, so do you wanna?
Yeah, we could go very quickly, I think we, that's okay with that. It's lower than it would be because we're assuming the bond passes. So that helps a lot with all I would say.
Right, and so to start with, you know, you can see our, that's our unassigned fund reserves where we start, right? So as you guys, I think you guys know this, but just, you know, if I tell, I just want to make sure you know that unassigned fund balance is basically the accumulation of revenues that exceeded expenses and expenses that came in under budget. And it's the leftover. Part of it was from the ARP money. But it's basically our money that's available to us that we can spend however the city feels like it can spend, it wants to spend, right? Now, we have put in place a reserve requirement of 25%. Now, our reserve requirement is based on the next year's revenues. So now originally, the reserve requirement was put in place to take care of the city in the case that there was going to be a downturn in the economy. And the idea was that that would fund us for four, five months. If, four, five, six months, if there was a problem in the economy. And that's what the reserve requirement was supposed to do. Now, there's been a big push, as you know, and you can see, I have, and I am out there, it says new next to it. And what, what this is for is that, as you guys know, FEMA may or may not continue to exist in its current form and/or at all in the next couple of years. And because of this, the GFOA and a lot of cities are putting in place additional reserves for disasters. So now, this one we've combined with major roads and disaster reserve. And I want it because this is, because if the bond passes, this would be a perfect time to start funding that account. So I would like to put a minimum of $500,000 in one or both of those accounts. And we need to decide, this is just a placeholder for the moment so we can have some discussions about this. And that is that, as you guys are probably aware, I don't know if Karen is in the audience, I didn't see. But Olom Road is a project that is currently under, they're expecting bids. And they're expecting those bids to come in greater than $300,000, but up to about $500,000. So that's kind of why the major road, a major road repair reserve is a good idea. And so if we have these, because you know, the city of Bellavista is relatively young. And we haven't had a lot of major road repairs. But things like what's happening there could happen again and in other places. So we need to start thinking about how are we gonna fund those? So that's what that $500,000 is. And the mayor was thinking $500,000 this year, $500,000 next year. But that's what, that's why that's on there. So we don't have the number for, the next number we don't have available yet. Because as you know, the police has just talked to you about $125,000 for some vehicles and we don't know where that's gonna be. So I don't have any, we don't have any carryover numbers. And we don't have any knowledge yet about what is capital expenditures for 25. So you know, we're funding some of the repairs out of the 25. So we may have to make some adjustments here, I'm sorry, the planning, planning remodel. Some of those, we'll have to figure out how much is going to need to go into that. We have to, it's a calculation that's not done yet. Okay, so.
We have a question, Kim, Larry.
Sure.
Kim, relative to the major road repairs and disaster reserve, do you intend to make a contribution to that each year?
I do.
That would be an accumulated fund until we had a disaster or a major road repair occurrence like we've seen in the past? Is that correct?
Thank you for that question. Yes, that's exactly what I'd like to do. So what I want to propose, and again, I haven't had a chance, as you know, this has been pretty fast and curious with all the bond stuff going on. So I haven't had a real chance to sit down and write up my ideas. But what I was telling the mayor is at the very least, $500,000 this year, $500,000 next year. And then after that, we would say, we would say, let's, if in the event we have a surplus, I would recommend that we have a surplus and we put 5% of the surplus in these accounts, in this account. If it's one or if it's two, I don't know, however you guys want to do that. But up until it reaches a certain balance. And I would say that that balance is probably $2 million. That would be my target. And after $2 million, it holds steady, it just stays there, we wouldn't fund it anymore. I'm just giving you ideas of what I was thinking when I put this together, right? And then if we draw down on it, we need another Olom Road or we have a disaster, then we could start building up again to the $2 million.
Travis, you had a question?
Yeah, I was just curious, I'm still stuck on how we can give our employees more money. Is the 3.7 and the unassigned funds, is that at the council's discretion or what to do with?
Well, yes, absolutely. And we are going to have to use some of our reserves to fund that 350 to 380 deficit on our budget right now. Will have to come out of, will have to come out of our capital. We will fund it from there. You know, naturally, there needs to be a line on here for that amount, whatever that amount is.
And for the current year, we're over $800,000 based on improved budget and expenses, correct, for revenue?
That's, that's correct. But I do think, well, we should come out fairly even. I had, I had said that we probably wouldn't need to go into those reserves because our revenues looks like it's gonna exceed budget by close to the amount that we were underfunded. Do you follow me, Larry?
Yes.
Okay.
But I'm talking about improved values.
Yeah, so it looks, it looks like we're, yes, we approved an $800,000 hit to capital last year. Right, but theoretically, it would have come out of our reserves, out of that 2026 revenue, revenue reserve. Would have come out of there. But I don't think that we're going to have, we'll be hitting that. Right now, that's what it looks like. But you know, again, you know, there's, we're only issuing, next week, we're issuing the August financials. So you know, it's hard to know for sure. I do know that the August sales tax for the county was a down 2%. So.
By next meeting, we believe we'll have the August financials.
Yes, yes.
She said we'll work on them already.
Yeah, you'll have one by then. So right now, we, this is, one of the debt services, our fire truck comes out here. That shift as a reminder to make sure you guys don't forget that our fire truck, it pays off. We did not include this in the bond because it pays off in two years. And we didn't feel like we needed to worry too much about that. So you can see how we, our next ambulance remount would be 29. Yeah, some of these things here, it's kind of hard to, these, these are assuming the bond taxes. But know that, for instance, there would be another $600,000 coming out. So $300,000 for '26, $300,000 for '27 on the ambulance remount. And then we would have to figure out what we're doing on the fire complex, the fire administration complex, right? It'd be really hard to know where we would land. But that would be, yeah, a very large number coming out. Our current, our current outstanding there, I believe, is what? Well, it's over, it's over $6 million, so. All right, then we, we have the police department. So just, you know, see, we have two years of no vehicles. We'd have to add back two years of vehicles. You know, there's some projects that I don't know if anybody can speak to any of these. I don't really, you know, I don't know what the special building improvement is. I don't have any insight into that. And then the street department, as you can see here, the, there's a number of items that are missing here. There's some dump trucks that are missing. And then there would be a street, you see how the street overlay and, let's see, there's two street accounts that are missing from here. Road construction, oh, three, there's new home, road construction and street overlay. So those, you know, we get two, two odd years to build up our reserves.
Shay had a question.
Hey, Kim, do we have this version as well?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, I'm back together, she was starting.
Okay, go ahead.
And then on planning, again, this is, there's some research being done, you know. So for instance, like traffic light hardware replacement, there are certain items that we put in here that we don't absolutely expect to spend, right? So what capital does is that if you think you might have a large outlay of cash that is non-operating, in other words, this, what this account is for, these wave, the traffic lights, the wave binding, what those accounts are for is that in the event that a traffic light cabinet or hardware needs to be replaced because of an accident or something like that, it would come out of capital, it would not come out of operating. Because it's not, it's not in the annual, operating is usually those things that are normal and customary to run the city. Capital is a, we've had a catastrophic event, somebody's, you know, plowed down another, another wave binding sign and we'd have to replace them. We don't, we don't have those every year. So we just leave it in there in the event that it happens. Then there's a blowing spring, the Springs Trail Extension. I know that we're doing some pricing on trail crosswalk replacement because that needs to be more refined. Then there's the sewer feasibility study. Is there any question about that? I think that's the mayor's project that that'll, that'll end up being next year or the year after, right? Depending on when the state gets their, their study out.
Yeah, I don't know if everyone's aware, the state's doing a study. And it's a, it's really a regional study and it's going on now. It's supposed to be done, let's say, next summer. And it's about, it's looking at the sewer problem from a regional level. In fact, it includes 30 cities and 18 sewer systems.
Or lack thereof.
Because if you've probably read, there's, yeah, or lack thereof, that's right. There's big challenges for sewer, you know, Bentonville, Centertown, of course, up here, P Ridge, Grabot. You know, maybe we're on the same boat, we, there's a belief that it would do better if we worked together. And I think that's absolutely true to economies of. to economies of scale and whatnot. Rather than, oh, this sewer system's in my city, so therefore I'm only doing my city stuff. Maybe we make the sewer system bigger than those other people do, that kind of thing. So.
But here's press.
Yeah, but there's, they're studying that it's going to take a year, and Taylor and I put some money in there for, we may be afterwards a more individualistic study. And there's already been some work done looking, blue grain looking at sewer, kind of down the spine, down 71, where there is sewer there, but some of the things they're thinking about need more sewer, you know, the stations, bigger pipes, that kind of thing. So there's a lot going on, as you can imagine, so.
Yeah.
But I am a big believer in the regional approach, and I think it's great they're doing this study, so.
Okay, and then this is, you know, this is another one of those things that I was talking about, that, you know, just in case their HVAC needs replaced, right? And then if we were to get a large number of grants, we've been holding money for this so that we can, we have money available to spend. And then these are some things IT is looking at. I don't really have any input into, any insight into any of that. So I believe that's the last one. Oh. Yes, that's the last one. Are there any other questions?
Travis? How much do we?
Twelve million, $12 million number that I had up there.
Okay.
Do you want me to share that again?
No, that's fine.
Twelve million, 147,000.
And do I remember that right from now, that it's a large one?
Yes.
More than the recommended?
Well, hold on though. The issue is that we fund our capital improvements out of that money. So the city, and I can bring up last year's if you want me to, but in this, in the past, we have spent every single penny of these available funds. So we end up, although it looks in the audit like we have $12 million, the only reserve we have is the 25%. Because we spend every penny every year. Does that make sense, Travis?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, when he said that, when he said that at that meeting, I cringed. It's good to know, it's good to know people were listening, on the other hand.
Okay, thanks very much, Kim. We have a question for Larry.
Relative to the individual departments, we have the police department, the fire department, the street department, the library, and then internal staff departments. How is the capital projects developed for those larger departments like streets, for example? Where does that initiate from and how does that get developed?
The director, the director initiates it.
And where does it go for review? Is that strictly with the mayor? Is it strictly with the mayor and the finance director? How does that go? What's the process, I guess I'm asking?
It goes to the mayor.
You're talking about the CapEx side, or?
Uh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So I will tell you, like, when I see something that, you know, when I do this, I ask questions, I ask questions about what they're hoping to do. I don't have any approval powers, right? But I ask questions to try to understand what they're doing, if that makes sense, right? So that I can document it. And we know, in the new year, I need to know that way so I can help them how to code it in their, in the accounting system. So I try to make sure I understand what it is they're doing. But the mayor works with the director on reviewing the projects.
Yeah, even before this first draft, we've knocked some things out, as you might imagine. And just because it's on the first draft, we can continue to take a look at things. A lot of them are kind of locked in, like, you know, Olden Road, we're going to fix it. And I think Karen put an estimate down on there, but we're going to find out soon what it is.
Yes, and what we did for Olden Road is, you know, Karen and I had a discussion and we think, and she thinks, is she in the audience?
Yes, I'm in the audience.
No?
Yeah, it's yours.
Oh, okay. So Karen can tell you, we think it's somewhere between, what did we say, 350 and 500? And that she's opening the bids at the end of the month, so I figured that some of that money is going to be spent in '26 and some in '25. So I'm holding in '26, I'm holding a little bit of money in '26 to see, you know, because I'd be surprised if it all gets spent and paid in '25. But depending on her bid, on how the bid process goes, if they say that they're going to be done by November, right, then we will remove that in the last version. That's a good question.
Go ahead, Larry.
So that project on Olden was in the '25 budget?
No, it's not, because we don't have an account. After she gets the bids, she'll be coming to council to ask for a budget adjustment for however much she's going to spend in '25.
Thank you.
I didn't mean to bring up a painful example, but I guess I did.
Yeah. Well, and that was part of why we put, you know, the reserve out there, because that one, that one street project, if we put $500,000 in that account, would spend every penny of that account. I mean, you know, so we'll have to write some guidelines, you know, the, you know, the repair has to be, I don't know, in excess of $50,000 or something, right? So we're going to have to come up with some guidelines about how that money can be used. But that's where we're going, is for specifically for things like Olden Road, so that we won't be surprised. We won't have to take it out of our capital. It'll be a reserve already established for that purpose.
Okay, there's not any more questions, I think that's the first starter. Thanks, Kim, for your efforts there.
You're welcome.
Let's move on. The next item is proposed amendments, chapter 109, and this is council member Wells. Larry, did you want to talk?
These are the same amendments that were presented at our last meeting, I believe, as an amendment to 109 versus the one that was actually adopted. And I talked with the director of the Village Waste Water Company, and he concurs that he still would like to see these, and this will be their code as well. So what we will be doing is adopting something that they are, they are already incorporating into their standards.
Mayor, Ken, I was aware, Larry emailed this to me. This by its nature is an amendment to the zoning ordinance. And so amendments to the zoning ordinance have to be done in a very particular way. And so I have looked at the law on this, and we're in a unique situation as well, because we have a new code that we've just adopted. This will potentially be a change to the code that you just adopted that hasn't yet taken effect. But any event, not to overly complicate, I think this has to go to the planning division for a public hearing before the council could take any action on its own. And so that's why I suggested we put this as a discussion item. I figured that was the case, and I didn't want to have us put an item on the agenda before I knew you could lawfully vote on it. I wouldn't know as well, I've seen what you provided, there are some drafting issues with it, just looking at it, and some things that can be worked out, but I don't think the council at this point could just put this on the agenda and approve it since it's an amendment to the zoning ordinance without there being a planning commission at least review. They don't necessarily have to approve it, but a review and a public hearing.
So what's the protocol to move this forward?
Well, you can give to Taylor and see if, when you get something on the planning commission agenda, but I think we need to, we need to make sure we've got this worded correctly. I mean, there, for example, it says in here that Village Waste Water Company by name will inspect abandoned septic tank work. Now, that makes certain assumptions that they would be taking over providing sewer for a property, but not always. So there could be unintended consequences with that. I'm concerned about the legality of that. On the second page as well, you're requiring all wastewater ordinance to be approved by the health department and/or Village Waste Water. So I mean, there are some, I think there's some legal issues that need to be worked out before the planning commission, you know, before we can put this as something that might want to be looked at by the planning commission. But I mean, I would refer you to Taylor and to the mayor about that agenda and seeing if there's any desire to move ahead with that.
Travis, I'm curious, Larry, what is the, what's your concerns with it? Because the easiest way, and I thought the engineer here said that he agreed, was just to say, hey, ask to be in accordance with Arkansas Department of Health, but what are you concerned about with the way that it's currently standing?
I guess I don't have a concern at all.
Okay.
I'm merely attempting to provide our code to be consistent with what the Village Waste Water Company requires, okay? That's all I'm asking to do. I ask you to do more than that, less than that, but that's my request, and that's why I brought it forward the last time, and why I brought it forward for discussion tonight. And I guess we'll let it fall where it goes. I'm, I guess, tired of working on something that doesn't seem to get any traction, get any traction to make us do the right thing for someone that serves us. And so.
Well, I want to, just because there are a lot of people, this has been a year-long discussion for everybody in the city, but not for everybody that's been paying attention. We did go to Village Waste Water, and then they did okay what we ended up adopting. And then later on, they came back, and I don't know what other discussions may have taken place, but I, you know, that did in fact occur. And I know that they may have, they may have thought something else, or thought of something else, or changed their mind, I don't really know. But, and Taylor had those discussions with those representatives, and so they were included in the prior discussion, as we make sure y'all do that.
Well, the only thing I noticed is one section near the front says that, we used to say the director would approve it, and it said the city engineer would approve it. So we have one city engineer, and he's part done, so supposedly he quits tomorrow. I'm not going to hire a new city engineer today, that takes some time. So it seemed to me it was better having the director approve it. The city engineer reports to the director anyway, and she's not going to do anything about him being in the loop in his area, so I didn't like that change. Travis?
I'm curious if Taylor wanted to weigh in on if there's a problem with just saying that it needs to be installed in accordance to Arkansas Department of Health standards?
Well, while she's coming up, I would say this, any change that you make to this at this point is going to have to go to the planning mission for a public hearing. So it's not what is being proposed exactly, it's the process.
Sure, I have a change.
I don't have any, hold on a sec. Yeah, it said, I don't have any issues with that specifically, but I will say what we adopted is, I'm talking about, you guys are talking, right, I'm going here. Thank you. The, what was adopted was Village Waste Water specs. We just didn't say Village Waste Water, because that's where the whole legal concern started in the beginning, is saying we cannot adopt the private entity specs into our local ordinance. And so it may say sewer provider instead of Village Waste Water flag and line. But in terms of the specs, house sizes, all of that, per the meeting he and I had, it was pulled straight from there. So that we will have a uniform installation for sewer installs across the board in case the event we do get a provider. We not want to specify Village Waste Water in the ordinance. That's why we had to change that to the public hearing.
Mayor? Travis? And if we did change it, and I understand the process is complicated, it may cost some money, and we changed it to just in accordance with Arkansas Department of Health, then you or the engineer would be able to sign off on it, is that correct?
That I'm not sure, I'll have to look at it and talk with ADH a little more. I did talk to him a little bit right before you guys voted on this, and we did talk about that, because that was one of the amendments, and Arkansas Department of Health did not give me any black or white answers. It was, the city can do what the city wants, if you guys want to be more strict, do you be more strict. So I didn't get any leeway from ADH on that amendment, but I would like to talk with them a little bit more before I give my opinion on it.
My thought was, if Larry was concerned in sewer, and you're going to go through the process, I would just send mine with his and give the planning mission all of the options.
Shay?
Taylor, do you believe there needs to be any changes along the lines of what Mr. Wells is proposing?
I have not read what has been provided to you from bottom to top, but I am comfortable with what you guys did at that.
Okay, if you reach us out to her, are you going to work with her on this?
Yeah. And we can talk about her. I don't know if you're going to be able to.
Okay. Frank, did you feel a desire to maybe say anything?
Not all of the changes that you put on it is necessary. The hole saw, it's a five and a quarter, not a five. Mega five, in the scope of point 40 PVC pipe, they're going to break the tank kind of get it in there. It actually me, ended up five and a quarter, it's hole saw. And on down in here, they keep saying 12.3 wire, then when you get your, then when you get down here to your two horse 200, 200, 20 volt grinder pump, you say two conductors and a ground, well, that's a 12.2 and not a 12.3. So it's two different wiring, what you're having in your ordinance than what's actually, we needed 12.2.
Did you not see what we had adopted and talk to us?
I did not see that. I did not see that, no, sir.
Yeah, probably we should just take this offline, and everybody, we need to try and sort things out. But I appreciate your company.
Okay, thank you.
Unless there's anything else, I think we're through with the agenda, and we'll hopefully see you next Monday. Thanks so much.